Good to go at least once in a while to get a.
We're alive.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Okay, good evening and welcome to the April 10th, 2018, meeting of the Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, we have Selectman Scasiotti, Selectman Tropiano, Selectman Bruce New, Selectman Slavin.
Old.
Old, and Selectman Tittlebaum.
In two ways. All right, next, pledge of allegiance. Jim Bruce.
Yeah, you gotta get Jimmy.
Lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Announcements, Selectman Scasiotti, Selectman Tropiano.
All right, so I got a couple of things. The, um, the C Everett Coop of today has asked, and this has not happened, it never happens, it's very off-rare that a Surgeon General will ask something of the public. It's very rare. But because of the crisis going on in the country with the opioid epidemic, he's asked everyone to get some Narcan. That's what this is. This is Narcan in my hand, right here. Now, the good news for Wareham is we have at our Third Thursdays at the Church of the Good Shepherd, we have the drop-in center. And at the drop-in center, they have this available and they'll teach you how to use it, which is really good, before you take it. And, you know, keep it in the car, I don't know, keep it in your purse, whatever, but just have it with you. This is pretty serious stuff that's going on right now, and the number of deaths is just overwhelming. And for the Surgeon General to come out and tell everybody to carry Narcan, it's gotta be pretty serious, because they hardly ever, ever make those kind of announcements, ever. So, that's something that, I got it right here, if anybody wants to see it, you're welcome to come up and look at it, or play with it, or whatever, just don't open it, because I need it, in case, you never know. All right, next, I want to talk about, it turns out that the conflict I thought I had with that 40B doesn't actually exist, which is good. So now I need to talk a little bit about that 40B. And the reason why I want to do it is because it's time to tell the state no, and I gotta tell you why. It appears that they're gonna build somewhere around 172 units. So, I did some rough numbers, just to do some quick math, and these aren't exactly right. But if we got $2,500 in taxes for each unit, right, times 172, that's $430,000. All right? Now, the potential is, in a, in a development like that, to get between 4 and 700 children, but let's just talk 400. It costs us about $12,000 to educate a child every year, times 172, times, what, 12,000, times 400. And I'm gonna use 400 because that's the least. That's $4,800,000. Pretty disparagey, isn't there? It's almost like a mandate from the state, you must accept this project, you must accept putting this into your town, and we don't care if it bankrupts you. We don't care if it bankrupts you. And let me tell you, it is going to bankrupt us. If this project goes in, and we have to come up with this kind of money, and let's say it ends up being half, because there's still some trade-offs and some things that might happen, not counting the extra services that get used, we will be bankrupt. Where are we gonna come up with that money? Where's that money come from? I'll tell you where it comes from. It comes from the school, because we'll have to cut the school, and it comes from every other entity in town, including police. Doesn't affect the fire and water, because everybody knows, right now, that those are completely separated from the town, and they don't, there's nothing for us. Now, I hate to dump on children. I have eight. And I love children. But the state cannot continue to mandate these kinds of things without somebody fighting them to the end. It's gotta go all the way. You can't let them bankrupt the town for, to make an affordable housing project. Hey, is there affordable housing projects in Weston? You know why? For one, the base price of the land is too high to make it work. They can't work it. Wareham has the double indemnity, double, because we're tied into the Boston numbers, so our affordable number is much higher. If we're like primed, we're right on the edge. But if you go to Marion, they're tied into New Bedford. This isn't gonna work, folks. We have to push this to the end, whatever it takes. We cannot allow this to happen. We can't afford it. And if we're lucky enough and only 200 children come, well, it's only $2 million. Not to mention the services for police, and fire, and all the other things. Ambulance service, and everything else that would go along with it. We can't let the state keep telling us, "Look, you're gonna do it whether you like it or not, because we have a program." Well, the program doesn't work, and it's unfair. And enough is enough. There's ways to have built those projects, that they could have balanced the books, and really helped the town, you know, been all right. But they chose not to do that. And it's not fair, and it's time to stop. Whatever it takes, it has to stop. That's all I have to say tonight, sorry.
Selectman Bruce.
Nothing right now.
Quick, Slavin.
Just to match in with Patrick. You know, we did send the letter, they basically rejected it and told us thanks, but no thanks. Onset's Water Department has decided to fight a tooth and nail it.
Yes.
Because they feel that they're under a different set of rules, and therefore, they're gonna do it. So, if we decide we want to join in with them, it might make it easier.
Well.
I was up in Boston today, and I did have a discussion, a very quick discussion, with Secretary Ash. I expressed my displeasure with DHCD, but we'll see what happens.
Yeah.
Let me go over here. Howard Jackson Jr., 88 years old, passed away just recently, on the 4th of April. Howard was in the Wareham Healthcare Center. He's, he was the husband of Sandra Jackson, and the son of the late Howard Paul Jackson Sr., and Lydia Lewis Jackson. He was born on Fall River, lived in Wareham for many years, served in the U.S. Navy during the Korean War. Mr. Jackson graduated from Keene State College. He was an industrial arts teacher in the Wareham High School for more than 30 years before retiring in 1991, and is a member of the Wesleyan United Church. He will be missed, thank you. That's all I really have for today.
Okay, first announcement, town meeting, Monday, April 23rd, at 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium. At 7:30, we will then segue into the special town meeting that occurs within the annual town meeting.
7:00.
7:30, the special starts. Regular starts at 7:00, and then 7:30 is the special. But, you know, you just stay in your seat, you don't have to do anything. It's kind of interesting, I didn't attend the Wareham Fire District meeting last night, their annual meeting. But it was interesting that, all the comments that I heard from various people, that the officials there had difficulty answering questions. And as a result, the body didn't want to vote on the budget, and they didn't, and they turned down a couple of items that the district was seeking. One of the things that I, and he's not here tonight, so I guess I can say nice things about him without him blushing, our town administrator does an excellent job, both in terms of working on the warrant with town council, the town moderator, and on this board, I seem to have been the person most involved in the articles. He does an outstanding job with that. He does an outstanding job of drafting explanations for the articles that come forward from the town side. And he does an excellent job at town meeting, explaining the articles again, and answering questions from people. And my advice to the district would be to find somebody like Mr. Sullivan, and have him carry the ball across the finish line for you. It's a lot of work, and I think perhaps they had been lulled in the past by the lack of attendance there, into thinking that it was just gonna be the business as usual, but the people showed up and the people did speak. We always anticipate that the people will show up and speak, and we try to make damn sure that we have answers for them when they ask questions, and he's a big part of getting that done.
They're gonna reconvene on the 30th.
30th, yeah, they're coming back on April 30th. So, they've got time. They've got time to fix things and explain some things. The second thing is, I just wanted to say, the next item on the board is reorganization of the board. It's been my pleasure, occasionally my challenge, but mostly my pleasure, to deal with these three gentlemen next to me, as well as former Selectman Whiteside, and for about 15 minutes tonight, Selectman Bruce, as the chairman. It's been a great bunch to work with. It's been a real pleasure, but our custom is that we reorganize. It's probably a good thing. That way, different viewpoints come to the fore, because different chairman have different priorities, they have different styles, they have different this. You know, all the chairman is, is, for the year, you're first among equals, and that's it. And that's something you always have to remind yourself when you're sitting here. But it's been a great pleasure to, to work on behalf of the town with, with these people up here. And with that in mind, next up, reorganization of the board. Who, who would like to make a motion for a new chairman?
I move that Alan Slavin be appointed chairman.
Okay, motion to appoint Alan Slavin as chairman by Selectman Tropiano, seconded by Selectman Scasiotti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. And with that, you get to ask for the next motion.
I'm gonna make it real simple. I'd like to suggest that we have Patrick become the clerk.
Okay, I'll move Selectman Tropiano, clerk. Second by. Yep, good. Got a motion and a second, Mr. Chairman, what do you want to do? Want to vote?
Sure, why not, let's vote.
What do you want to think about it for?
Open up the discussion.
Sure.
My body's still up in Boston right now.
It was a long day for you.
Yes, it has been since 5:00. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
It is, it is done.
It's been a while since it's been 5-0-0, it's nice.
I know.
Yeah, it was 4-0 for so long now.
There's a reason I put this before citizens' comments.
I know.
I'm looking at her.
Yeah. I can't even get a break on my first night there.
Sandy Slavin, come on.
Come on down.
Come on up. I just want you to notice that that white book is back in place.
Thank you.
Gotta put your name in there.
I don't know if it was last week, was it last week when they mentioned citizens' comments? And I think I said, "She's not here?"
She called her earworm five miles away.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Sandy Slavin, and Mary, welcome.
Thank you.
It's nice to see a female up there again. I appreciate your time and energy to join them. Several things. Went down Indian Nick today, and the town municipal maintenance was clearing up the side of the road of all, some of the debris and stuff like that. And I want to thank them for the taking, taking the time to clear some of the very ugly debris that's left over. There is a lot more in the woods, and Minnetonka Forest is meeting tomorrow night, and we have some people willing to come help us identify the trails that need to be cleared, not give the Cub Scouts the equipment, but at least tell us where they need, we need to cut. So, Minnetonka Forest is working on clearing up the trail.
Really needs to be forested, I mean, there's a lot in there that needs to, because they're gonna kill the other trees if they don't get some of that out of it.
We have a forest management plan, and we have an area that could be forested, once the cost of wood rose a bit. It wasn't, when we had the plan done about four years ago, it wasn't economically feasible to do it, but we're keeping that in mind. There's a section that can be forested. And we know the forest grows back. It looks a little bad, but it does recover, because we did it along Indian Nick Road about, when we buy the house, '85, '88, '89, they did some forest on both sides of Indian Nick, and you wouldn't know it now.
Yeah, there's a lot of downed stuff in there that really needs to get out of there, because if it doesn't, it's gonna kill all the other trees, you know, that's the problem.
It is nasty.
Yeah.
It's a bad story.
Here's a question, I'm not sure anybody can answer, but if you go down Oak Street, Indian Nick to Crooked River, huge, huge logs on everybody's yard. I was wondering, the electrical company hired somebody to take all these trees down, and they took care of the smaller branches and limbs and stuff like that, but there's logs 18 to 20 inches in diameter sitting on yards. And I was wondering if there was anything, if you've heard anything about how those are going to be removed from people's property? I know a lot of people have gone down that road and taken what hardwood had been felled, but that, most everything left is, is the soft pine. But it's gonna ruin the yards, and I was wondering if you had heard anything about cleanup?
Not as of this time. The initial problem is that I believe Municipal Maintenance had done some grinding, and I believe Mr. Sullivan is not here, but I believe he told me we already expended like $10,000 grinding.
And that was for grinding for people that brought stuff to Municipal Maintenance, but I was wondering what the electrical company had contracted for to clean up the debris from taking, clearing the trees around the wires.
It depended on where the actual tree, whose property was on. That's the issue.
Yeah, if the tree is still on their, on the owner's property, they're responsible to remove it, unfortunately.
I wonder if they know about that?
I don't know, that's probably a good, that's probably a good point.
And then week or two, we'll get an answer to the public. Thank you.
Yeah.
Make a note.
Yes, there, Trey.
Okay, um, next, next thing, I, um, I know somebody who went to the Cape Cod Canal Regional Chambers meeting the other day, and came home with things called Village Walking Guide of Sandwich. I know there's one for Wareham.
There is.
I don't know where it is, but why can't we promote ourselves by having this type of brochure available at, at the chamber, or at the visitor centers, or stuff like that? But this is Sandwich.
Used to have one at the visitor center.
I know, but I can't, I haven't seen it. It wasn't presented, I can't find it any place. I know the Historical Society worked on it, or whatever, but we had one, but.
Hate to say this, but the person to ask about that was, because I remember they printed that, and they made that whole brochure, and they made one for the businesses, is Flo Backren, believe it or not.
Wow.
She may know where the actual original copies are.
But then, came home with this thing, Cop Cape Cod Canal Regional Insider's Guide, and within the last week, received an email saying, "If you want your stuff in this booklet, please forward it to us." I sent a copy of that request to the Historical Society to promote our July 4th. I sent a copy of that to several members of the Beach and Tourism. We should make an attempt to make sure all our events are included in this type of document. I strongly recommend that the Community Events Committee reach out to those that are asking for money, to make sure they promote their event in this type of document. So, Beach and Tourism, Community of, Community Events, yeah, Community Events should help promote this for Wareham. And then, let me read you something out of it. It talks about Wareham beaches, I know, I'm almost 10 minutes. I know, I have a time limit.
Five minutes.
Listen to the beaches. Onset Beach, Little Harbor, Briarwood Beach, Minnetonka Forest Beach, Point Independence Beach, Long Beach, Swiss Beach, Shell Point Beach. None of them are identified as private. None of, not all of these are open to the public. But just to have these beaches listed without some type of caveat, it saying sticker only, or private, it just seems odd to list all these beaches that are not available to the general public. So, I don't know who submitted that to the chamber, but it should be adjusted.
I don't think anybody in official capacity did. I would also make note that the Destination Wareham organization also puts out a similar type guide for Wareham. It's a glossy production, they put quite a bit of money into it, costs money to advertise in it, a lot of local businesses partake in that, and that is often right beside that guide when you go to different places.
We can promote Wareham, and this is, this is an opportunity.
Yeah.
And thank you, and welcome, Mary.
Can I have my booklet back?
What?
Can you write it in the book?
The thing in your, was in your right, in your right hand, yeah. Remember, that's mine. Thank you.
Well, it's now evidence of what I don't know.
It's the Community Events Committee. Okay. No way. You lost your passport, you can't do it anymore. You sure you know you're here? Go ahead, Mr. Walton.
First, congratulations, Alan, and Patrick, and welcome, Mary. I don't have really questions, just three comments. Dave Walton, District 3. Under Town Business, line B, says, "Request for, from the Don't Trash Wareham to place signs on town property." That's a bit of a oxymoron, because they're gonna put a sign up saying, "Don't put signs." Read this sign, "Don't put signs on town property." But I don't know if that's gonna work or not, but you know, this is getting ready, where we're gonna start seeing yard sales and for sale signs on town property, and we've gotta put a stop to it, because it just defaces the town. So hopefully, if these people want to put up some sort of sign, it has a little class and professionalism, rather than just a plain sign. Related to Don't Trash Wareham, yesterday, going to district meeting, I went down the street over here, and the park where the, the moving wall was placed last summer, which is a, which is a track, it's, it's school property, I believe, there was a couple people over there walking dogs, without leash. You go a little further, the other field where the helicopter landed, there was a woman over there with two dogs, not leashed. So, if we're gonna put signs, let's get some signs over there saying, "Keep the dogs off school property." I think that was wrong, that bothered me, I'm sorry, and I love dogs, but I don't think they should be walked, taken on scound, uh, town property. And the final thing is, I had breakfast this morning with a young lady who's a neighbor of mine, and walked from home, took a long walk down to the local restaurant, and, just to get exercise, and it was a pretty good haul. And she came in, and she was absolutely appalled. As she's walking along, not at a high pace, there was not a training for the marathon or anything, just, but just walking for exercise, and it was a pretty good haul. She counted 152 empty nip bottles walking along.
She said that.
That's absurd. That is really absurd. We've had this battle before. I don't know how we're gonna do it, I don't expect an answer right now, but we've gotta do something. I don't care whether it's force the package stores to put the bottles in the back of the store, put a nickel on the bottle or something, but I am tired of kicking them in the parking lot, seeing them on the side of the road. Mr. Tropiano and I, a couple weeks ago, watched the guy walk across the street, have a couple, chase it with water, toss it, had another one chase it. This is ridiculous. This is, this is not right. End of story. Continue, please.
They're not giving you a break. Mr. Chairman, there is one more announcement, and that's that the Don't Trash Wareham cleanup will be taking place in a week and a half. And it's funny, because we've got two founding members of Don't Trash Wareham here, and they totally spaced out on it. Imagine that. So.
It's on Facebook everywhere, can't miss it.
Well, yeah, but not everybody uses Facebook, and after Mr. Zuckerberg's testimony today, there's gonna be even fewer of them.
I think so.
Okay, never mind. Okay, anybody else?
That's enough.
Yeah, that's true. Appointments, reappointments, or interviews? Do you have an appointment for representatives to the regional? Do we have? Well, without the paperwork, I think we need to pass until next week.
Yeah, okay.
You won't fall off on that.
Yeah, I'll make a note for it. Okay, next is Cafe Soleil. Temporary change of hours, they're looking to change their hours. You got that?
You got it?
Yeah, I got it.
April 17.
Oh, this is the, this is the 40, though.
That's the other sign.
Yeah.
Where you want Cafe Soleil?
Make a squat. Okay. I'm double dipping.
Anybody here from Cafe Soleil? No?
No, the aunt's not here.
All right, so, then I move that we authorize a change in hours of operation for Cafe Soleil for our April 17, 2018, to open at 3:00 PM, and to close at 10:00 PM.
Any comments?
No.
Not heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Okay, next on our list is possible votes recommended for warrant articles. I'd like to hold off on a couple of the warrant articles that were citizens, because Town Ministry is not here, and he actually has input for us, and we'll have to make our decision. I think it's pretty important, he's here for that.
Yeah.
And I don't know if we, I don't have anything else here, so I think that's all we can do at this point.
The only thing that we're left to recommend were the petition articles that we hadn't. I think the only one we had recommended was the abandonment of the April Street.
Yeah.
That one we had recommended, the rest we were holding off for, waiting for petitioners. We, we've only had one other petitioner come in, and that was the gentleman last week. And I know Derek has some information.
I think the other one we have is, is the budget, because the school committee still has not voted on, on their number yet, so that one's still sitting, I'll tell. Okay. Next we have, Don't Trash Wareham, place sounds on town property. That'll be the Walton rule. That's okay.
Okay, I move on April 4th, 2018, uh, no, hold on, on April the 21st and 22nd, huh? As in the past, they're requesting permission to leave the signs up until Labor Day, allow them to put the No Trash Wareham signs up. I move we authorize that.
Second.
Just a quick comment. Signs are done in such a way that if it's in most of Wareham, it says "Don't Trash Wareham." If it's in the Onset Village, it does say "Don't Trash Onset Village." And I'm going to abstain, being one of the founding members, I guess Mary probably should do the same. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, yes, and yes. 3-0-2.
Oh, did you abstain?
Yeah, he does.
You both abstained?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're founding members, even though we have no financial interest.
You don't have any financial interest.
But still, it looks better.
Okay.
Trying to be nice.
All right.
Okay, we have one item for $48, a single sheet there. You had this on for.
It came to us late today.
It was a single sheet, did you put it in?
Did she send the paperwork?
What was it?
There's a signed permit also.
Oh, that was, it's stuck here. Yeah, Wareham Rabies Clinic from the Animal Control Officer.
I gave that to Patrick. And is there a note with it, or not?
They, they want to put signs up.
This is under $48.
You have locations.
Yeah. Patrick, on this one here, I noticed that they have Bessie Park. I believe Bessie Park is historic district, we don't have the right to put a sign in.
Yeah, I think that's right. All right, so, I move we allow the Rabies Clinic to put signs on the following properties. Onset Pier, Glen Charlie Road, Head of the Bay Road, Elm Street, County Road at Main Street, Toby Road at Main Street, Lopes Field, you know, those are the ones that the, by the bump outs there. Yeah, Onset Abbott, Cranberry Highway, and in front of the Multi Service Center. That's what they're asking for, so.
Give us a second. Any questions for the board? Not heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
Okay.
We have no town administrator's report? We have no town administrator.
We have a town administrator that is taking care of children.
Yes, he is. Okay, next on the list, Tony, anything at all from any committees, boards, Patrick?
I have a little something. Okay, so, during the election, there was a woman who picks up the phone and calls me from a bowling place, and she was a little upset because somebody told her that her sewer bill was gonna go up 50%, as, as well as the water bill was gonna go up 50%, because of the money they were getting to repair that pipe from Swiss Beach down to the Narrows. Well, that's totally not true. It's gonna be $10 million, but it'll be bonded over 20 years. And they will have a number before town meeting, so go there with an open mind, and when you get the number, it'll, I think you'll be pleasantly surprised. It'll be a lot less than you thought it was gonna be. And so, it's, it's not 50%. It's nowhere near it. It's not even, I don't think it's even 10%, matter of fact, I know it isn't. It's a small amount of money, bonded over 20 years. To pay for a project that if it doesn't get done, just so everybody knows, at some point, that pipe's gonna blow out. And they were talking about it recently, again, the sensitive areas that it goes through, if it ever blew out in the areas, and we're talking about a lot of environmental impact, a huge environmental, it could cost many, many many more millions than what the repair of that pipe is going to be. Because the, the, the damage it would do to the environment is huge. So we have to, uh, we have to do it. It's part of the upkeep of the, the system, um, and they're doing a better job anyway. Now, the other thing about trees, well, let's talk about, a little bit about trees. Trees, if you have a tree in your neighbor's yard and it falls onto your property, you know, in Massachusetts, the law says your neighbor's not responsible for the damage or anything that that tree does. You have to cut the tree up on your side, you have to take it away, you have to do whatever. The same thing happens when it falls over the wires and into the street. The town comes by, they clean the street, but they don't clean the property relevant to what's on your property. You have to do it. You have to take it away. So the tree guys I know are stressed. I got a woman on my street who's got like a seventy-five foot pine in her yard and it was amazing because she has two sheds. It fell right between them. Didn't do any damage at all. It's just kind of laid right down between them, which is kind of neat. But, uh, her kids have been playing on it because it's really pretty big. And, uh, but she's responsible to get it out of there and they told her that it would be somewhere in eight to twelve weeks before they finally got there to take that tree out of her yard. Uh, but that's the law. If you look it up, there's a, you can Google, you know, mass law on the, on trees, it's there and it tells you that that's how it works. If it, even if it fell and hit your house, they're not responsible. Your insurance company is. It's not them. So that's how it works. I just wanted everybody to know that that's the way it works. And that's it. I'm done. Thank you.
Too soon for you.
Too soon.
Let me see. We're not quite ready for a save the date yet, but, uh, things are proceeding with the Second Annual Meet Me at the Tremont Event.
Yes.
It's planned for August twenty-fifth, so keep that date open on your calendars, but I think within a couple of weeks you'll see a save the date and announcement go out for it that will list the, uh, the type of food, the entertainment, uh, the art this year and of course the fact that there will be a bar, most important. Trying to think if there's anything else. No, just town meeting in thirteen days.
Oyster Festival.
There is the Oyster Festival coming up. Uh, that is, what, the Memorial Days Sunday?
Yeah.
But I don't even know what the date of that is. That's, that's a ways off.
It's a great take, though.
Twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth.
Twenty-seventh?
Something like that.
Yeah.
It's into me.
And once again, speaking of alcohol, we liberalized what they could do. So you can walk the street with a beer now, as long as you stay within the sawhorses. Out on the river.
Today was, uh, we call Tuesday Boston Day for Alan. I was up at the State House today for Mass Municipal Association, Mass Selectments Association, Local Government Advisory Council. I did get to meet with, uh, Lieutenant Governor, met with Matt Beaton, Mike Helperin, Marty Suberg, these are all different people, and Jay Ash. These are different secretaries for the different pieces. Jay Ash, of course, oversees the housing and everything else, so we did talk about things a little bit. The state right now, because of the change in the tax laws that came at the end of the year from the Trump administration, a lot of people started to declare income that they've been holding because the corporate income taxes dropped drastically. So what we call the benchmark, uh, income that's being basically withheld coming into the state is approximately eight hundred million above the benchmark numbers that they were working on. So at this point here, even though there may be an effect toward the end of the fiscal year to June, the end result is we don't have to worry about any shortfalls or any kind of, anything that's been put in place being cut back. We expect to actually get some more money out of this, which is a good sign compared to where it was last year. Uh, we're getting money for the unfunded early voting program that was approved. The money is coming through. This was a program where we were allowed to vote early and the state put that in there, but it was declared by the, I think it was Bump, Secretary of Bump as an unfunded mandate. It's the first unfunded mandate they've actually made them pass. Uh, the House so far has added twenty million, excuse me, twelve million dollars to the Circuit Breaker Program for the school, which is important to them. They're also going to add two and a half million dollars for the charter school, you know, reimbursement back to the towns. It's not anywhere enough, but at least it's there. Uh, we should get a press release tomorrow about a bunch of these things and there was a comment made today in Boston, uh, that, remember, this is an election year, so most likely politicians will be doing good things because they want to get elected in the fall. So it's a good time to ask for things because they really don't want to say no. Uh, the governor should start reviewing the budget by the beginning of May and hopefully by beginning of June, we'll actually have a budget. I wish we had that timeframe to work with. There is something sitting out there that I want to just let people know that, uh, we have a thing on, on the sales tax. We're supposed to bring the sales tax down to five percent. It's been at six point two five for quite a while and it was agreed to that it would go back to five at one point. There's a citizens petition article like we have here to bring it back to five. The problem is if it goes back to five, what happens is the money that comes into the general fund for all the cities and towns will be reduced approximately by close to one billion dollars. That will be a disaster for all the cities and towns. It sounds like a great idea, you know, to reduce the sales tax and everything else for the individuals, but at the same time, if you think our services are limited now, uh, it would just devastate everybody. So just to let you know that's there. The millionaire's tax is still on the, on the ballot, which is basically taxing people, anyone who makes over a million dollars a year and the taxes, they would pay a higher rate than anybody else. There's, uh, there's a question whether that's, that is really legal or not. It may end up going to the Supreme Court on that one. The Airbnbs that are around everywhere, they, they basically have a bill in place now to, so we can actually tax them like they do for hotels. There'd be three different types of, uh, facilities and there's different tax rates for each. I'll get you more information as we get closer to that. They'd be under Chapter sixty-four zero and Section D. This will be taken care of. There'd be three different hostels and I'll get you the information on that. Uh, there's going to be a new, uh, adopt a new set of regulations that will require inspections when the sixty days, once this comes there. For us, we're in good shape because you already have the rental program where, you know, anybody has a rental house, basically has to be inspected. So we already have something in place, which puts us way ahead of the game. Uh, we have new housing and zoning bills coming that will help somewhat, but it won't be that easy. The Chapter ninety funds, as usual, they're late getting it all done and they're basically, the House passed about two hundred million dollars instead of three. And the Senate also did the two hundred million, but they did theirs basically for six hundred million as a three-year bill, so you wouldn't have to wait. If it goes through, that two hundred million dollars will be available at the beginning of each year instead of having to wait till May. And by the time you get your, your money, because you can't spend it till you have it, so when you want to do a project, you're into June and all the contractors are basically booked out and therefore you pay more than usual because it's not, everybody's work, work is laid out for you. So hopefully this will help as well. Uh, there's a bunch of clean energy bills coming through. Uh, as I mentioned before, there's an SJC case on open meeting law violations, performance evaluations need to be done in open session, I mentioned earlier. It just came out, was kind of a, took everybody by surprise. There's a new recycling program called the IQ Kit that I feel I'm giving to Mr. Sullivan. Uh, we have a possibility of signing up for this. And the curbside communities that go into this program receive between ten thousand and forty thousand dollars based on the households. Drop-off communities can receive up to seventy-five hundred dollars. It's education plus the system itself. It might help us with our trash issues because of what's happening with the recycling. So that's another piece that came in, which was interesting to see. There is a small and medium, uh, project dredging program that the governor has basically signed. Let me see if I can get you, I may have a number for that.
That was a hundred million?
Uh, I think it was actually, this is a little different than that one. But the bottom line is we would qualify for the small and medium, which would be good because basically you have Gloucester, New Bedford, and Boston. And whatever they have assigned for dollar wise, those three communities will wipe out everything that's available. So we may have a piece to go there as well. MS four program is, they're going to have with the bond bill passes they're working on, which would help us with that. They have a deferred maintenance bill coming through, which would be a big help to all of us as far as communities go. They have an MVP program. I have to check with the Town Administrator Sullivan to see if we signed up for that or not. That will help us again with different funds coming and et cetera. If we become what they call an MVP, which, program, which is the Municipal Vulnerability Program, and we get funding for that and the Green Initiative, we already know about. These different programs under the environmental bond bill is one point four billion dollars the state is putting up to help. So it's not an insufficient amount of money coming in there. There is another piece that was interesting, they're going to do a workforce skills program, which is something this town really needs badly. Uh, the state will fund a new regional development program for very large projects, up to fifty million dollars per project. Another piece that came in was, uh, was really interesting, CPA funds are now allowed to rehab affordable housing.
Oh, really?
Just came down, today announced that they've actually made a change and that's going to be available, which couldn't do before. So that's another nice piece coming. They also have, which will help us, if you want to go to sleep, Mrs. Slaven, it's fine. Just let me know, dear. And the other piece that also came in, which I think, again, we need to look into, there's a new program for developing downtown areas that have empty stores for small cities and towns. And that obviously would help us quite a bit and maybe we can do something with the back of merchants where they were sold.
Maybe you could forward that to Director Buckland?
This has already gone to Derek and Ken. I mean, the housing bill alone was one point eight billion dollars and the economic development bill is one billion dollars. So, you know, Mass Works, et cetera. So all I can say is that the state is stepping up. We need to step up and take advantage of what it is. You know, we're getting early advance notice because we're met with the stuff, but, uh, we haven't had this kind of opportunity in a long time. That's it.
Okay, then.
Okay, can I just say one thing?
Go ahead.
So Alan wants to do the liaison things next week. So I will have Ju-, uh, have Janet send out the liaison list and who's assigned to it. And anybody who wants to give something up, you know, let every, let's let her know so she can put it together so it can get to the, us next week.
Yeah, that'd be good.
And that way you can choose some sites too, but you'll be, you'll get it in your mail and you'll be able to see what's available and so on, okay?